Thank you very much, and the next item on our agenda is a wastewater discussion with Andrew Gotlieb, Bob Seholick, Cape Cod Commission watershed, and then a Cape Cod Commission watershed presentation by Paul Wagneswicky and Patty Daywood.
Why don't you guys come up?
Let me, you haven't seen this one.
We have not.
I'm doing well. Let me pass this out to Andy.
Thank you.
And to anyone else who might like a copy.
I don't think we have to introduce the two of us, as we used to work together years ago.
Well, kind of on opposite sides of the issue. But yes, we did work together.
We did.
I bet that can be down sometimes.
Like lions and lambs, right?
Yes.
Bob was the master, I was a student at the time.
I am a retired master.
I will tell you that when I was running for county commissioner.
I am always a student.
Your name came up almost simultaneously out of the mouths of he and Mary. My friend Mary, this is the guy you gotta talk to about wastewater.
Were there expletives or something?
No, actually.
Only from Mary.
Yeah, only from Mary, that's right. And she can come back and defend herself.
Well, I don't know where Andy is, and I know you have a schedule.
That's okay.
And so I'll wing it. And with a small group, I think we can do this.
Did he know the devil?
He said 1:30. That's 1:30. 1:40.
Welcome.
In your world, it's 1:40. The same thing is on camera, they're gonna believe me.
As a way of giving myself some protection, we haven't really rehearsed this at all.
Yes.
So I'm not sure what we're exactly going to do, but I thought what we could do is sort of walk, since you haven't seen it in particular, we'll walk through the presentation and then get to questions and answers. Although feel free to interrupt me or Andy as we go through the material. Although I reserve the right to say it's in a future slide.
Yes, please do.
Well, I think it would be useful for you to go through them and then we could respond.
Yeah, just also by way of a sort of a caveat, what we tried to do was write this from the perspective of a numeric town. When you get to the point about advantages and disadvantages, the perspective I tried to take was one of relative neutrality, looking at it from as a town official might look at it. Some of the advantages and disadvantages are clearly debatable, but that was the perspective that I took in terms of trying to lay out what some of the funding options or choices that communities on Cape Cod might have with respect to their wastewater capital plans. So with that said, I, when we dig into this issue, I think it's important to broadly discuss the almost overwhelming financial impact of the issue to Cape Cod communities. And the best estimate that we have seen recently in terms of the financial scale of the program looked at for all Cape Cod communities ranges somewhere between 3.2 billion and 5.8 billion, depending on a host of assumptions. As a way of highlighting the magnitude of those numbers, it's interesting to take a look at it on a per person basis and on a per property basis. And on a per person basis, it ranges from roughly $15,000 per individual to $27,000 for an individual. And when you think about families of 2.3, in terms of a household, of course, it's much larger. And in terms of the number of properties on Cape Cod, because ultimately the usual determinant in terms of who pays is usually looked at on a per property basis, it ranges from roughly $18,500 to roughly $33,000. By any estimation, these are significant numbers. And I think it is this sort of singular fact alone that has caused communities for the last 20 years to sit back and to try to think through what would be the appropriate way to pay for the project. And there is no easy answer, obviously. People would've found it 20 years ago and moved in a direction, but I wanted to put that in some perspective. The other thing to put in perspective is those are capital cost numbers. It does not include the cost of operating the wastewater treatment capital assets that are going to be built. And again, the best estimate that I have read is when fully built out, the operating cost will range somewhere between 40 and 68 million dollars on an annual basis. Again, substantial numbers. What is particularly important to know is that the numbers that I just mentioned to you assume that everyone pays or every property pays. But you know, a fair perspective on the issue is when you look at what individual towns are proposing, it's gonna roughly 40 to 50% of the people on Cape Cod would be sort of traditionally asked to pay, where you then now double all of the numbers that are laid out for you. I mean, if only half the people are connected, if life takes its sort of normal course, only those half of the people are going to pay. And of course, the per person cost of the per property cost will double. It's also important to realize that in terms of these numbers, there are a number of communities out there that have yet to determine, I think a reasonable person would not say that they'd come up with final numbers, let alone a final capital program. So inherently, this is an estimate. It does not take into consideration the impact of the lawsuit by the Conservation Law Foundation. I mean, no one really knows what that impact is going to be, although it is quite possible that the entire issue may take a different arc as a consequence of the lawsuit, not the least of which is the issue of the amount of time that communities will have in order to develop their plans and execute them. The implication of that is very simple. If you had a million dollar program, you had a million years to pay for it, it's not a particularly heavy burden. If you have a million dollar program and you have a week to do it, it's quite, has a spectacular impact. It also does not take into consideration the fact that it is fairly evident that over the next few years, let me give it sort of the negative perspective, it's not likely that a clean water standards are going to be reduced. That's more probable than not that they're going to be increased. And to the extent that there are substantial changes in the rules and regulations in respect to what needs to be done, that only drives costs. So it does not take that into consideration. And last but not least, it also does not take inflation into consideration. I think all communities and the county commissioners need to pose a couple of core questions before you do anything. Because the answer to that question, to some extent, gives you guidance in terms of what is the most appropriate funding mechanism or mechanisms to pay for the program. And one of the key questions is, to the extent that one knows, and one does know, what are the benefits of spending all of this money? And I see there listed six different bullets, which I think lay out clear, tangible, and to some extent intangible benefits of doing the program. Just highlighting the very first bullet is, one of the clear reasons that we're doing this is to protect our drinking water on Cape Cod, as we know, salt, I mean, I won't get into it, because you will, everyone knows this, but we have a salt source, and trying to preserve the cleanliness of that water and public health is terribly important. Once a reasonable person makes a conclusion in terms of the benefits, then you have to ask the questions, the follow up questions of, at the end of the day, who benefits? I mean, if these are the benefits you get from spending the money, what individuals will benefit? Which leads to the last question of, well then, if you know what the benefits are, and if you know who benefits, then who should pay for the program? Sort of the good news about funding options, excuse me, and the bad news about funding options is there are not 125 different options to go through. They really are only for significant choices. And again, it goes back to why for the last two decades. There has been such a difficulty on the part of communities to make decisions in terms of funding moving forward, all stemming from the fact that at the end of 1980s and the beginning of 1990s, in terms of federal grant funding, those dollars ended, and in terms of any significant state money, those dollars ended a nine or 10 years ago. Actually, about seven or eight years ago. Communities have got four, communities have four distinct choices to make. The probability is, when communities move forward, it won't be with just one of them. It will be with a combination of some of these four choices. The first choice is to use their existing revenue, as limited by Proposition 2 and 1/2, but revenue beyond the real estate property tax to pay for capital and operating expenses associated with their wastewater programs. The second choice, which communities almost invariably look at initially, is to use betterments to pay for the capital costs, not operating costs. The third choice that communities have is to conclude that neither of the first two choices are possible, therefore we need to have a Prop 2 and 1/2 override or debt exclusion vote as a way of increasing property taxes in such a fashion as to pay for the program. And last but not least, a choice that communities have that is not generally thought of, except perhaps in an operating cost sense, is to increase rates and charges to pay for both capital and operating expenses. There is virtually no federal or state grant funding available in the year 2011. There is a limited amount, most notably, in recent years anyway, the town of Chatham has been able to receive some grant funding from the United States Department of Agriculture, which helped them significantly in terms of building their proposed upgrade of their wastewater treatment facility. Most communities ultimately will either use their own ability to issue general obligation debt, or will take out loans from the statewide revolving loan fund to pay for the capital cost, which ultimately will have to be paid back by one or more of these four funding There are a lot of bullets in the next four slides, and in the interest of time, I'll try not to go over each one of them.
It's a practical matter, this is gonna be on page at some point.
I don't know, we haven't thought about disseminating this more broadly than you right now.
We'll talk about that at the end.
As I mentioned, the first choice is to, for a community, is to take a look at their existing, the existing availability of property tax levy or other funding choices as a way of paying for primarily the capital cost of the program. In truth, the good news about that is that if communities can do that, it has no immediate financial impact on property taxpayers. Also, spreading the cost over the real estate tax base does tend to spread it over a wider base than if you were using betterments, for example. The reality is, though, that virtually all communities on Cape Cod are right at their Proposition 2 and 1/2 levy limits. It's, they only have fumes left to spend. And the demands for existing town services sucks up all of the oxygen in the room from year to year with the small amount of growth that's permitted under Proposition 2 and 1/2. However, the town of Barnstable has chosen to dedicate its increase in the meals tax, the new meals tax, as well as the increase in hotel occupancy tax into a dedicated fund that will be used in part to pay for its capital program. The town of Chatham, to an extent, has been planning for a good number of years for its wastewater capital program, and has been earmarking as its debt service for existing capital programs terminate, repurposing that debt service within the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2 to pay for a large portion of their capital program. But by and large, for most communities, unless there is a decision to significantly reduce the current level of town services and then repurpose the property tax dollars, this is generally not available for communities and accounts for, more than I think than any other reason, a reluctance on the part of communities to move forward aggressively in terms of their capital program. Moving on. As I indicated, betterment assessments is statutorily permitted for all communities in Massachusetts. It tends to be the first thing that communities look at, because to the extent that there is any history on Cape Cod of doing sewer projects, they tend to be done, they tended to be done through betterment assessments. However, once communities begin to look at the size of their betterment assessments, because of the size of their capital programs, they tend to be, in some cases, virtually confiscatory, very large. In addition to that, communities are also, grow concerned about the fact that there's not necessarily any relationship whatsoever between betterments and benefits of the program. Betterments are largely done for individuals sewer projects, which tend to be neighborhood based. Again, a concrete example of how that tends to be unfair is when Barnstable started to move forward with betterments, the range of betterments that they were looking at for individual sewer projects ranged from a low of about $15,000 per property to a high of $52,000 per property. The only difference between those two numbers had nothing to do with the equities associated with benefits. It had to do with the number of homes that were in a given sewer district. It's the cost of the sewer project divided by the number of homes. It's inherently inequitable. In addition to that, Yarmouth, for example, when they looked at betterments, and they tend to, they seem to be moving away from it, although I'm not sure they have a definitive plan yet. The betterment law allows for the development of what's called EDUs, or equivalent dwelling units, where as a way of trying to build some equity considerations into the betterment formula, you take a, one EDU is roughly equal to the amount of water used and presumably wastewater generated by a one dwelling unit. So therefore, if you have a, usually a commercial establishment that uses significant more waters, they would pay a multiple EDU. I think it became, and this is my own judgment, but I think the town of Yarmouth has decided to sort of back away from that, because once they started taking a look at the multiple EDUs for a lot of the motels along Route 28, they realized that very quickly they were gonna be into the hotel business. It's a marginal businesses that would be hit for seven, eight, nine, 10, and I remember in one case, 11 times the assessment for an individual home. So betterment assessments are available. They are, from a community perspective, in a functional sense, a good way to approach it, because towns can place liens on property, they ultimately will get repaid. But they are inherently inequitable in most communities, after they dwell on all of the issues associated with betterments, tend to back away. Barnstable has moved from its initial plan of 100% betterments down to a plan now of 50% betterments, and I'm willing to put some short dollars on the fact that when it's all said and done, the betterments will be either zero or much less. Communities then get to a point, once they realize that existing revenue sources and betterments are not either politically or substantively the optimal way to go in terms of paying for this huge cost, they develop the logical conclusion that the best thing to do is to take a look at a vote, usually a debt exclusion vote, to ask the citizens of a community to increase property taxes in such a fashion as to pay for the capital portion of the program in whole or in part. Barnstable, as you know, recently had that on the ballot last year, it was defeated handling, no surprises. Other communities are contemplating it, and I know Yarmouth is thinking about it, and other communities are thinking about it. I would say that what communities have consistently failed to do, in terms of even having a ghost of a chance of getting an override passed, is to conduct a well-funded, well-thought-out political campaign, informational campaign, to educate people about the need for this program. And until that is done, there is not a high probability that communities are going to vote for what will be usually a fairly significant increase in their property tax bills. However, that is available to communities, and communities will continue to look at it, and maybe in some cases, multiple times. A fourth alternative, which is, I think, by far, the most flexible funding system, and being flexible also efficient, is the imposition of a system of rates and charges based on water consumption, as modified by the fact that water consumption measures the water coming in, and ultimately, what you really want to do is figure out a number for the wastewater that is going into the pipes that have to be treated on a per gallon basis. This is the funding methodology that certainly is used by most communities that are in existing systems. This is the most common methodology, for example, that you could find in the greater Boston area. Virtually all capital costs and virtually all operating costs are paid for by the, in the case of most communities, quarterly charges, and in the case of most, many communities, monthly water bills that people pay. It is not traditionally looked at on Cape Cod, except to the extent that you have some existing treatment plans and customers, the operating costs are usually, the operating costs are traditionally paid for by rates and charges. Unlike property taxes, I think one of the disadvantages of the rates and charges is that for those individuals who itemize their taxes, you do get a deduction for your property tax bill. This is a fee, and it's not deductible. However, one of the, I think, significant advantages of fees and charges is that everyone pays. There's no such thing as a tax exempt entity. When you consider rates and charges, including the local government itself, usually large producers of wastewater, and in the case of Cape Cod, there are a number of very large nonprofit institutions that produce a fair amount of wastewater. Everyone pays water and sewer charges. Those, unfortunately, I'd like to say there was a fifth choice, magic money, something like that. Unfortunately, we lost the magic money back in the late 80s. That was the grant funding from the federal government, and a lot of the grant funding from the states. But those are the four choices. Communities, and just to reiterate, communities ultimately will pick a combination of several of those choices, and, and how they do that will be more likely than not the end product of a great deal of political and analytical thought. There are some other related issues that should be briefly considered. Now, number one, I am under no illusion whatsoever as to the possibility of the federal government or the state government reconsidering their decision to terminate grant fund. Hypocrisy does not seem to bother them. They're quite pleased to issue more and more expensive regulations and dictates that require this work to be done, and at the same time, very easily eliminate grant funding for it. However, if you don't try, the chances of getting any grant money is zero. If you do try, the opportunity to get grant funding is slight. Slight is better than zero. It will, however, require a concerted, aggressive, in-your-face political campaign to be successful. The one small possibility on the horizon is the fact that the state legislature has created a joint Senate and House committee or commission to take a look at the issue of reinstituting a grant program for water and wastewater projects, of which Paul is a member of. But as we have learned many, many years ago, the old phrase about ten stopple, there's no such thing as a free lunch. Any grant program will be controversial inherently, because it has to be funded by something. Whoever pays that funding will be, whoever receives the grants will be thrilled, whoever pays the dollars into the grant pool will be less than thrilled. So I mean, I'm not at all optimistic that they're going to come up with an idea that will be universally appreciated by everyone. However, to the extent that they have a direction, and to the extent that one can predict an outcome, if they do what they say that they're going to do, and they're going to produce, last time I heard, a draft report this month, and a final report in the fall, they are talking about reinstituting a grant program that should be beneficial for the Cape, but film 11 is something that needs to be tracked, and I think the good news is that Paul is tracking it and is actively participating in the group. But beyond that, the, our legislators on Beacon Hill and our Congress congressional delegation need to be educated with respect to the enormity of this program. If there is an expectation on anyone's part that this is going to move forward aggressively, and in a manner that any reasonable person would deem to be a fair manner, it needs to be accompanied with significant federal and state grant costs. to be accompanied with significant federal and state grant funds. Or to the extent that you think there has been any political conflagration to this point, you ain't seen nothing yet. A little-known cheat, because that's the way it'll be perceived in public if it was ever used, is a way of statutorily evading the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2, which the legislature knowingly created several years ago to provide initially communities in the NWRA area a way to shift the rates and charges onto the property tax. But it's available to all 351 cities and towns, and that's using Master on Law Chapter 59, Section 21, which only requires a vote of a legislative body of a community, not a vote of the public, on a dollar-for-dollar basis of taking a dollar off of the rates and adding it to the property tax. In a community where half the people say, for example, are paying rates, where 100% of the people, their properties, pay property taxes, shifting it from a 50% base to 100% vote, 100% based by a vote of a legislative body is a way of avoiding the vicissitudes of Prop 2 and 1/2 override vote at the risk of being glitched. Because no one knows about this, it's not done frequently, but it is an option that is available to people, and I would think that a town that would consider this, it would be down the road a piece, they should accompany it by a broad-based education program so that the public is aware of why they are doing it.
You also have to have a rate system in place for it to do it.
Yes, yeah.
So, most of the towns don't have that.
Correct.
They need the infrastructure to charge the rates to be able to set this up, so it's way down the road.
And then last but not least, I mean, one obvious question that is sort of logically asked and been asked of me any number of times as I've talked to local officials is, well, what happens if we regionalize the system? What impact would that have? And of course, just inherently, that is a controversial subject. I would say, however, that there are clear advantages in terms of regionalizing this One distinct advantage is that the lack of coordinated planning by the 15 communities on Cape Cod, and don't be under the illusion that they're all talking to one another and coordinated their planning, because they're not. They are really all over the map in terms of where they are in this process. A coordinated planning approach by a regionalized system gives everyone the opportunity to think through the number of wastewater treatment facilities or other capital assets needed to build the system. It's not, in my judgment, and it's only my judgment, it is less than likely that communities are going to get together and figure out a way of sharing a wastewater treatment plan. The chances of doing that are increased if done on a regional basis. We don't really need 12, 13, 14, or more wastewater treatment facilities on Cape Cod. We need a smaller number. And again, the chances of having it done in a coordinated fashion is increased by regionalizing the issue. You will save, as I mentioned before, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, operating expenses are expected to range somewhere between $40 and $60 million. Clearly, by building fewer facilities, one will be able to bring down that annual operating expense by a percentage amount. Don't ask me what that is, but fewer facilities are clearly going to drive fewer annual operating One of the issues I know of great concern to the county commissioners and of the Cape Cod Commission and everybody involved with this issue is comprehensive watershed planning. We all talk a good game about that, and some of the communities have made some efforts to try to work with the joint communities. I would only offer that the chances of that coordinated watershed planning would be a lot easier and better on a regional basis than on an individual town-by-town basis. The disadvantages are numerous. Leaving aside the obvious politics of the situation and the consternation that people would inherently feel about it, it would require very complicated legislation and a very complicated and complex legislative debate. It would, I list this as a disadvantage, but my own personal experience is that it is an advantage, that communities would lose a large amount of control over their responsibilities to develop wastewater capital programs. And I said it that way because having direct experience with the legislation that led to the creation of a regional entity in the creative Boston area is the, politics of the situation was that you publicly bitched about it, and then you privately chewed it on as a way of effectively dealing with the issue and being able to lay a dead skunk under somebody else's bed. So it's sort of an advantage and a sort of a disadvantage. I would also assert very quickly that if that is an option that ultimately is considered, that it needs to be done in such a fashion as to both legislatively and politically ensure a great deal of public accountability in terms of the effort. And that can be done in a number of ways, but it's not for today's presentation. Ultimately, it has to be supported by plurality, if not a majority, of people upon Cape Cod. And the best way to do that is to make sure that the way the organization is created reflects the interest and the deeds of the people of the Cape Cod, and people feel that it will be accountable in terms of the amount of money that has to be raised in order to do the work. But all that being said, I think that there is a possibility of saving some capital dollars and some operating dollars if one views the requirement of moving forward from a Cape Cod perspective and not from an individual community perspective. And I hope I gave you enough things to think about, but that's the end of my little presentation.
First of all, I want to thank you for the very comprehensive and very candid look at a very serious problem. And I know that a lot of energy and effort went into it, and I certainly appreciate that. Andrew, did you have anything to add to that?
No, nothing, I think Bob covered the field very well. I think, you know, you had been asking me for some time about, you know, a financial model, and I think, you know, it was reflected on the work that Bob's done in a number of these communities. He precluded there wasn't a model in the sense that people sometimes think about it and sort of plug in, you know, plug in these numbers here and spit out the answer, but really this framework that Bob very well thought through and presented to you today that says, you know, there's a range of choices, and then how the numbers work out, and those choices are going to vary by community. But I think this is a pretty useful framework that restricts the conversation to the really serious issues that people need to consider as opposed to sometimes the flights of fancy that people get sidetracked onto about, well, if we could just, you know, think about doing it this way and think about doing it that way. You know, you get four options that he's laid out for you that are the real options that need, that none of them by themselves solve people's problem, they just, they give you a way to figure out what your exposure is and figure out how to deal with that. So I think, you know, it's a pretty good way to summarize a lot of good work that was done with individual towns. Again, sort of having a perspective apart outside from the towns gave the county the ability to sort of provide a summary presentation that the towns don't often necessarily see because they're thumped into these walls as they go down each one of these paths and get frustrated without being able to look at what's really going on.
There are three things that came up for me in the course of that. Number one, those that are on septic and who will never be, so they still have cost of septic upkeep and that sort of thing. So, within these four, these four options, I see, you know, then there's thousands of other layers that you've got to, you know, pull through and take out these little sections, and how do you deal with that? So that's, that's one of them. With the Barnstable approach last year, when they were trying to do 100% betterment, if you remember, we met outside there and I was talking to a lot of people going into the building, and one of the gentlemen that was on the committee that was reviewing the plans felt that your suggestions to the town at that time were very good, with the exception of, then there was this gap that, you know, well, that's where we'll go for federal funding or state funding, and it wasn't, it was like another 20% that was left. And he said, well, how do we know we're going to get that? And my thing is, well, if you build it, they can't just leave you like almost ready to hook up, I mean, somewhere, somehow, that pressure, it helps with the pressure, the political pressure on the federal and states. So how do you get people to get over that leap? And the other is, how do we, when you were talking to different towns about the regional approach, what is your sense, well, no, no, but when they, when they bring up-
Because I wanted to get out of there a lot.
That's right. But they bring up to you, what about doing this regionally? What is your sense of their feeling when they say that? When I, I'll tell you what my sense is before, is that they want you, they want somebody to take it away from them. And yet, then there's always this suspicion, like, we're giving, we're going to make somebody bigger than us or have power over us that we own, and that's their fear.
Well, let me respond to the third one first.
Okay.
First of all, the conversation I had, informal conversation-
Yes, I know. It's the same with mine.
I'm authorized to talk about that.
Yeah, I know, I know. But it always gets-
Yeah, it's a, it's kind of related to what I said earlier about whether it's an advantage or a disadvantage, is I think most people have a love-hate relationship with the concept. They are suspicious of it, and I can understand why. Cape Cod in Barnstable County sort of generically is not a, an urban area, it's not used to having sort of regional organizations. And they, and government here is very close to the people, and they feel comfortable with being able to call up their select person and chat about a bridge that needs to be repaired or whatever. And the notion of having some huge bureaucracy out there that they don't control frightens them. On the other hand, communities that have begun to think through realistically the cost of this program come to the conclusion, much along the lines of some of the points that I mentioned earlier, that the only way to fairly pay for this program, even having a ghost of a chance of fairly paying for the program and at the same time saving some serious money, is to think of the issue as a regional issue, not as a town of Eastham And so, people have understandably mixed feelings about it, and they need to process it more. I mean, they need to have more facts, more information. We need to turn the heat down a little bit on the subject and not be histrionic about it, and try to figure out a way to, you know, sort of move forward in a thoughtful fashion. And so, that's that.
Subject system question?
Yeah.
I mean, as a, you know, this, these numbers were for capital costs of collection and treatment. There's a, it doesn't really factor in the cost of septic maintenance and replacement, which is an in-the-ground cost now that everybody by the septic system has exposure to, but they don't recognize. So for those who have to replace at some point, you know, their per-household cost, to put it in these terms, is going to be $13,000 and up-
That's tight.
-depending on where they are and when that hits, and that's solely liability that runs directly to the homeowner with nominal assistance. I mean, there's the septic program, the county provides some low-interest funding, but the, in many ways, it parallels this discussion. So people aren't starting from zero, looking at 3-point-whatever to 5.2 billion, they're starting at some number much closer to that, that they don't even realize is an ongoing obligation. And if you're lucky, you own your home, you enjoy your time down here, you sell your house, you never touch your septic system, and it's great, your wastewater cost is zero. And if you're not lucky, or you're here for a long enough period of time, you're going to pay. And so that sets the floor much closer to where these numbers start than zero, which is what a lot of people think we're talking about.
Just, just for instance, on that, it would be at least 10 years ago, my mother's home in West Yarmouth, off of Seagull Beach, the estuary there that you can, that you're looking at if you're at Red Jacket or Seagull Beach. When she bought that house, it was basically, they're not even septic systems, what is it, the-
Sestrels.
Sestrels. So we had to replace that, of course, and that was $26,000 over, I would say at least 10 years ago. And that was for a three-bedroom, one-bath home.
Well, the number we use for sort of vanilla, easy, straightforward title five system replacement is 13.
Yeah.
And that's, any complications-
That's low.
Any complications, site restrictions, or IA requirements for nitrogen reduction, or lifts, or any of that stuff-
Right. And that's not, that's not accounting the maintenance and having it pumped every year or two years?
No.
All right. So we face a reality that every person on Cape Cod, when they flush a toilet, uses 18 and 1/2 gallons of water and flushes it down the toilet. And the ordinary way of dealing with wastewater is to use a waterborne means to either put it in a site, say, a site-specific or onsite system, or in the case of, say, downtown areas, to put it someplace else. The first approach that we're always taught in business school is, the first thing to do is nothing. What is the price of doing nothing? And that's, and I pose that as a rhetorical question because I don't think any of us know, and we all fear with that. We're all standing on our water. At least, you know, I'm sure you're going to cover that again, you know, in your presentation. If we're standing on our water, in the theoretical sense, everybody says we ought to do something about it. In a practical sense, it would be my opinion that unless and until the legislation gives an authority to a regional government to act, we will continue to talk about how important it is to work together, how important it is for each one of the towns to recognize their opportunity to take advantage of a regional planning process. But I just have observed in the time that we've been talking about this, and I've been looking at this for most of the time that I've been a county commissioner, and where I have seen some progress, I haven't nearly seen a change in the political attitude with regard to people who, in a theoretical sense, recognize and accept the need to do something, but do not recognize or accept the need to pay for doing something. So, having said that, we have people that, you know, we've sent up to be on different committees to, let's say, to look at what we need to do. The thing that I find on regional boards is that although we would maintain the sovereignty of the board, there's a suspicion that the county somehow is taking that, you know, taking that over. I've come to believe that that's not necessarily a bad thing, because I think with appropriate authority and with, you know, with the appropriate transparency, we could move this process forward. First thing that comes up is going before a board of selectmen in any town and have them say, you know, things are different here because we, you know, we don't, we don't have the same problems that they had in Bourne, in Provincetown, or anyplace else. And yet, he'd keep hearing over and over again, better do something. Well, I don't think it's a piecemeal thing. I think that the part of the planning process at the, you know, at the Water Collaborative is to take a look at these models and basically say, if you take this model, that's what this costs. And I'm glad to see, you know, he had a, had an attachment of what it would cost me, because that's really, you know, all that matters. So it's telling me that if I decided to be responsible for it, that- So, it's telling me that if I decided to be responsible for it, that this is each person $15,000, if there's 174 dwelling units, is that?
174,000 properties.
Properties, okay. How many dwelling units are there, 1,500? No, excuse, 15,000?
150,000.
150,000. Now, does that, does this figure relate to a dwelling unit?
No, that's, that's properties.
Properties.
No, so that would include some vacant land.
Okay. So, each person, for capital cost, that's, you know, that's where the, where the billion dollars come in.
Right.
But it also suggests that, that if there's an average of three to four people per dwelling unit, that that would be, that figure would be, you know, multiplied by four, so it would be $100,000 per person.
Well, yeah, the traditional number used is 2.38 people, representative family. Cape is a little bit different demographics of the Cape, but still, it's, yeah, I mean, if you've got multiple people in the house, it's going to be significantly more expensive.
Okay, and then during the period of time where we enjoyed the economic engine, so-called, of the tourist industry, we then increased the amount of people that we had. And if we built for peak capacity, you know, the old, you're totally comfortable, you build to peak capacity, you then have the rest of the year where somebody has to pay for the availability of peak capacity, that's what we used to call a demand charge. And I wonder, is this building for peak capacity?
No, no, that's just a broad brush through.
These are just.
It's hardly a sort of sophisticated look at how it really will be, I mean, just want to give you sort of a broad understanding of the impact on a per person and on a per property basis. The ultimate cost is, is going to take any number of variables into consideration, seasonal being just one of them.
If I, if I may, I mean, because it is broad, and because people will look at this as though these are the answers, and they're not.
Yeah, it doesn't get any better.
No, these are just, this is just sort of like an overview of the problem, and these are different ways that we can approach it, and we'll have to decide on one of these ways, and whichever, or a hybrid of two or three of them. And, so, you know, I can see why you haven't, I mean, this isn't something that I would say, you know, we were ready to say something, you know, I think that people can have the conversation.
Well, we're in a conversation about this now.
Yeah, but I mean, I wouldn't, I can see why you didn't think, you weren't ready to put it up on a website yet, because it's something that could be almost more alarming to those who don't know it in its context, as opposed to.
I certainly.
I think it's available, but.
But I think in terms of every drop of water that was present at the beginning of time is present now, and it's been clear to me that it's a management problem, it's not, you know, it's not an availability problem. So, being a management problem, I think that, I think that this framework, at least, begins to look at management strategies, you know, to address this. Now, having said that, I agree that we need an aggressive education program, but I'll say this, that every education program that we've been involved with is fine up until the time when you get to the bill, says it's going to cost, this is what it's going to cost you tomorrow, and everybody sort of leaves the room, or wants the National Science Foundation to come in, and then, you know, then we, if that peer review wasn't as good as the last peer review, or not as good as the next one that comes up. To me, it's a very significant reality, we're standing on our water, and we have to take some steps to protect what Cape Cod is, if for no other reason than to protect the value of Cape Cod as an economic entity. And to me, you know, I don't think we've begun to look at that personally.
Yeah, just to your point, what is the cost of no action? And when you look at the development of a year-round economy on the Cape, especially if you use sort of the life science investments that have been made off Cape and other places, we're really nowhere in that transition right now, although we're working hard to try to get there. You look at a seasonal economy that's been flat for over a decade, and you look at declining water quality, that is a death spiral for this region, and we have to work on all three of those areas at the same time. This is incredibly important. If you, if you look at the Cape economy and $5 billion in commercial transactions, even a 10% drop in that is going to have a significant, significant impact on 250,000 people that live there.
So, it seems as though there was a definite call to action, and it seems as though the longer we wait, you know, the further behind it will become. So, it suggests to me that, and I believe in a linear process with regard to this, is that we need to develop, which, what is the first step that we need to do? And I think you've suggested that, is that we need to be more aggressive about the need for action at this point. And I believe that, you know, that perhaps is something you, you know.
Yeah, well, I would, I would agree with you again, though, that everybody wants to fix the problem. I think everybody, especially people that have been here for generations, recognize the problem when they go down the water, and they, and they see the water quality degrading. Everybody wants to fix it until you see the price tag. Once the price tag shows up, there's a, there's an incremental process that takes place. The first thing that they do is question the science, second thing they do is question the engineering, and the third thing they do is vote no at town meeting. And that's why we have a lawsuit, and that's what, that's what's driving us here. And it is frustrating, because the county really has taken a leadership position on wastewater. It has for a long time, it's been part of the MEP project, 10 years where the science still take a look at the problem, it created the Water Protection Collaborative six or seven years ago, and it has done everything within its power, I think, in an incentive-based way, from an educational format, to try to move us towards the most effective and most efficient solution. And I think we're all running thin on patience now, and I think that includes a federal judge at this point. So, you know, I agree with you, though, and we've got to find a new way to get the message out there.
Okay, when we went around and did the Dog and Pony Show to set up the collaborative to begin with, the same questions that are putting, that are coming up now continue to come up. There doesn't seem to be a change in what I'd call the local political attitude with regard to moving on this because they don't know it, because there's not enough factual information. We, I think all of us would like to be in control of what we, you know, what's in front of us, and we're all looking for ultimate predictability. When we go to the Assembly, they want us to predict what will happen if this happens. Well, you know, who knows? But, you know, if you want to go through a bunch of scenarios, you know, we could do that, but it's not really useful. I think that we know what we need to do. Now, the question is, what, how do we organize ourselves in a way to go out and promote what we need to do? And I think that that's, you know, that's where we're at now. Part of it is, to me, is that you develop some legitimate, verifiable issue that cannot be refuted, that says, you, which would be the first step, we've got to act to stop this. And to me, it's, you know, the analysis of, how much water are we wasting? You know, they, we don't, we do have water mains, and there's a certain amount of liquids that comes in water mains, and there's a certain amount of, let's say, of effort as far as, you know, as far as water treatment and preventing water from going into the system, you know, recycling and things like that. So, the question comes, what do we need to do right now in order to effectively move this process along so that we can say, you know, say, a month from now, six months from now, a year from now, that we've actually seen some evidence of progress? We have in Chatham, Provincetown, Bonstabil, and Dennis, Yarmouth is looking, you know, looking at something, I know Howard is, you know, is moving forward on it. But we have other towns, and we have, and we have this community. So, I'd be willing to commit to put, you know, to going, you know, going to Dog and Pony Road, you know, road again, but I'd want to have some, let's say, some, what I call verifiable facts that say, if you don't do this now, this is going to happen. And I'd be, I would be happy to go out, you know, and be in anybody's, you know, everybody's face about it, in the hope that somebody would pay attention, because you've got to do something.
Well, the facts are on the ground. I mean, you know, you know, maybe, you know, mostly self-facing abeyments are worse than they were before. You'll get some people, and that's by and large, I think, an indisputable fact, in that you don't need any more than that to make the case of the water quality. In fact, there are people out there who will argue with you about whether or not it's really a septic and nitrogen-driven issue, and those people argue with you about whether or not, if you stop the nitrogen inputs from septic, whether you're going to see any sort of improvement in water quality. You know.
My answer to that is the.
I mean, to some extent, the, you know, that's a hard argument, it's a hard argument to win, because, you know, it's so much flies in the face of, I think, generally given realities that most people accept, but you're going to run into those problems, and you're going to, you know, and you've got to be willing to sort of have that argument with people over and over and over again, and you'll never satisfy them.
Well, the American Revolution, they, I remember this quote saying, "If you wanted peace in your time, you quit," and just, you know, just keep a status quo. If you want to be, if you want to be liberated, you have to make the sacrifice.
I do think that there has been an increased education for a lot of people across, I mean, I know that even since I was on the Assembly, so I'm going in six years now in county government, and I, you know, I mean, just look at the Wastewater Collaborative itself, that is now represented by more selectmen, you know, that was our request, that the selectmen are there. And I find on most boards, you know, off, you know, in informal conversations, you get about two or three members of the board who really get it and would really like this to be taken from them, take this cup from us and let this go. But it's always those one or two that can be swayed by those that are on the other side. And I do, and the other problem that we have is that we have a population that changes. People move in, people move out, people move in, so there's new people all the time saying, what? So, you do have to answer these questions over and over again, whether you like it or not, it's not as though you can just get it out once. But I think the majority of people, if, if they see that everything is done as fairly as it can be done, and that you are looking at every option along the way, and that they are being privy to that information as it's adjusting itself and making progress down the road, the public would be much more receptive than, than those, those few naysayers. So, I think it's, I think that it's something that can happen. I do think that, you know, you do need, you need a push and a focus from the state and federal governments to do this. And I do know that there's more interest, because of your participation on that meeting, and also our efforts of, you know, going around, and I know you've been talking to, there's been a change up there in the Department of Inventorium and.
Okay, well, I think that the next step is to perhaps, as the Wastewater Collaborative, to suggest the first step.
Okay. Well, we're meeting in July, and we can talk about, I mean, I think a lot of the first steps are already been taken, the watershed work that Paul's group's been doing.
Yeah, we've done a lot of the watershed tour, we've, I'm going to show you the presentation here, we're going to revamp that, get that ready to go. And we'll be out there every night, every week, every community, we go out wherever they want to hear the presentation, we're going to go, and we're going to find new and innovative ways to get the message out. One fact I would lead you with, and this came up in the, in the State Infrastructure Committee we talked to, most of the people in Massachusetts that are on centralized collection systems are part of a regional system. It's almost 70%. So, you know, even in Massachusetts, even in the Balkanized Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you know, regional efforts at water and wastewater are the norm, not the exception. And the 15 towns on the Cape are not going to be able to, are only going to be able to escape that fact at great cost to their own taxpayers.
Okay, so with that, I will segue into your presentation.
All right.
And thank you very much.
Brief recess for tech reasons?
Sure.
Okay, this is a copy of the presentation we gave at the Smarter Cape Summit a couple of weeks ago. Yep, it's all cut off and everything. But it really was, was meant to talk about what we can do with open Cape coming forward. But we'd like to start when we talk about the watersheds with the place itself, remind people where we are. We are Cape Cod, an iconic peninsula, one of the most recognizable peninsulas on the globe, with 560 miles of shoreline, one-third of Massachusetts coastline, and over 1,000 kettlehole ponds, as the glacier sort of scraped back. And we are a sole-source aquifer, as Bill pointed out earlier, and so, everything we do really at the commissions is based on water, water quality issues. 106 watersheds have been identified, and then this is, is the map that we generally like to start the discussion with, because this shows our nitrogen-sensitive watersheds, and there are two colors up there, blue and gray. And the blue watersheds are those watersheds that cross town boundaries, and the gray watersheds are those watersheds wholly contained within one municipality. Two-thirds of those watersheds cross town boundaries. So, if you're thinking about the most efficient and the most effective way to remediate water qualities watersheds, it's hard to contemplate that 15 different approaches is actually going, is going to be the least costly or the most effective. And then, we get into the people. This is where it all gets a little fuzzy.
Population growth.
Now, this isn't the presentation that was supposed to be here. It's too late, it'll be done by the time she gets up here. And so, we want to talk about people and the population, population growth on the Cape, and this goes from 1800 to 2010. So, you can see that that population growth, starting in 1800, is fairly steady for a long period of time. And we get to the turn of this century, and then we get to the 60s, and we have the Kennedy Effect on the Cape. And you look at the rapid population growth since the 60s on Cape Cod. Even the latest population census data that we saw, it saw a decrease of only 6,000 people. So, this is population growth really from 1950 to 2010, displayed differently. So, you can see those white areas where there's residential population growth, and you can see that decade-by-decade expansion, the 70s, the 80s, the 90s, and then 21st century Cape Cod. And so, it's a significantly more dense place now, with a lot more people than it used to have. We have land use changes, and this pie chart over there reflected in the map, this is sort of a McConnell land use map analysis. You can see that yellow is the residential development, the green is undeveloped land, and the red is commercial property. So, you can see that commercial development relatively constant over time. What's grown is that residential population. And when we talk about wastewater and the problem, problem is onsite disposal, so you can see really where it's coming from. And that'll just keep looping if I let it, so I'll close it. So, we get into a discussion about the people, and this is a section of Falmouth, one of the fingerlets in Falmouth in 1943, and these are great ortho photographs to show you the development over time, '43 to '55 to '66 to '77 to '91 to 2000. So, you can see, and that leads us where we are today, and this is sort of the populate, the 215,000 year-round population, and its relative distribution on the map. But now, of course, seasonal economy in this, our population can swell from 100 to 200 times what it is year-round. And what that leaves you with is a, this was Monday getting off the Cape, pretty much, hour and a half to get off. So, this, this is what we're left with, and as, when it relates to wastewater and the financing of wastewater, unlike transportation or education, where you have significant federal funds or state funds that come through, this is almost exclusively borne by homeowners, and homeowners that have to build for this peak flow pricing issue, building capital facilities that could have to accommodate flows for the four peak months of the year, which are the last two weeks of July and the first two weeks of August. So, this is the problem, this is Prince Cove here, and the onsite wastewater systems create, put nitrogen, and nitrogen causes the problem. So, we've put together a little video vignette of the nitrogen problem. So, this is nitrogen, which is a chemical, it's not toxic, it's found in all living things. It's also produced synthetically in fertilizers, and it can be distributed, distributed also via our atmosphere or by human impact. And there's a difference between inert nitrogen and reactive nitrogen, but on Cape Cod, 80%. Okay, here we go. This is the high-tech. So, you're going to zoom into Sandwich here, and a lot of the nitrogen comes from natural surfaces, 1% of it, not a lot of it. And then, this is Lake Willquacket, so about 8%, comes from water body surface areas. And then we're going to take a trip out to the outer cave to look at my favorite impervious surface, the Wellfleet Drive-In. So, we have 6%. So we have 6% comes from impervious surfaces. But most of it comes from us. Golf courses, about 5% comes from fertilizer. We hear that a lot, why don't we just control fertilizers, not the most significant part of the problem, which is us. So 80% of the nitrogen that we're dealing with comes from wastewater. And there are, as the population slide suggests, a lot of us. And as we start to pop up over time, we look at how the nitrogen circle, cycle works in households. So we draw fresh water from the aquifer. The average household water use is 196 gallons per day, and 90% of the indoor use becomes Title V systems never intended to deal with nitrogen, really to remove pathogens.
Hold on, that slide, did that say 30% is from the bathroom, and the rest are like from showers, dishwashers, when you're talking about all of those gallons of water?
It's a movie, Sheila, I can't back it.
I know.
Yes, most of it's gray water.
Most of it is.
Well, it's gray with non-profit water, which is like 70% gray water.
Yeah. But you can see the impact in the bays creates the problems that we see.
Well, if there's 2.3 people per structure, and it's 18 and a half gallons per person, then you're talking about 50 gallons.
It's not, average, the average per capita...
It's flushing.
Oh.
It's flushing.
It depends on what it was. I mean, the average gallons per capita per day, the goal statewide is 65. The Cape doesn't meet it.
I used to use 40 gallons per day for hot water. How many people do you know that are probably still asking, what would be the demand for electric hot water here?
Yeah, but toilets used to be seven and a half gallons of flushing. Now the code's 1.6. So...
That's Prince Cove. This is actually Wacoit Bay. Yeah, you know?
We're sorry.
I have to start playing those little clips at the beginning of the movie, say, "Turn off your cellphone, don't talk." Yeah. This is from the Webner Boathouse. These are 57 abeyments identified by the Massachusetts program. This is the status of the MEP reporting. So those lighter green areas are the watersheds that are done, 46 nitrogen sensitive, 23 watersheds done, 23 that have to be completed, that will be completed within the next few years. So 10 years into the MEP project, we've made a lot of progress, and we're almost there. This from the MEP shows you the nitrogen-sensitive watersheds, the ones that are most acute are in darker blue. And so you can see Wacoit Bay, Bass River, Chatham, but the hotspots really become more apparent when you look at subwatersheds within the larger watersheds. And so this gives us a glimpse of what some of the potential solutions might, how difficult some of the potential solutions might be. Clearly, if you've got to remove 100% of nitrogen from a subwatershed, you can't then turn around and discharge it in that same watershed. So some of the solutions is the traditional approach, which is sewers. Now, if we use the population density maps and we looked hypothetically at what the Cape would look like if we sewered all development, that's what it would look like. And that's an $8 billion price tag on that hypothetically. Now, thankfully, we have the MEP. It has suggested to us, with the TMDLs that have been established so far, that almost 60% of households on the Cape could remain on Title V systems, and we could be compliant and meet those TMDLs. So when you look at, start to look at numbers like this, that are this big, we look at the impact on the Cape, we want to look at some of the demographics. So this is cut off at the top, so I'll explain to you what you're looking at is our housing units per square mile. Darker ones are more dense. So you can see the population developed really on the tucket sound in those smaller lots, and a lot of density there. This shows you the Cape-wide share of seasonal homes. This becomes an important map. What's emerging here is a picture of two different communities, two Capes. And so we see the seasonal economy reflected here. We see some of the wealth distributed along these similar patterns, too. And it also factors into how potentially we may want to look at financing options going forward. This shows you the flip side, which is owner-occupied housing units. These are our year-round residents. This shows you the average household size. So the larger households are where those year-round residents really live in the middle of the Cape. And these are median housing values. So those darker blue areas on this map are those housing areas that are more expensive, and the lighter shades are less expensive. And this shows us the median household income. So clearly, the seasonal homes, that income is factored out here, important for a lot of reasons. This shows you the labor force population, and these are the unemployment rates. So what we've done is taken all of these census block group data slides and created an amalgam. And that's what you see here, is one problem that's dividing us basically into two places, the darker areas, the blacker areas, and the greener areas. And this becomes incredibly important when you start to look at solutions and potential funding solutions. Clearly, in some of these green areas, if you are dropping betterments on individual homes that are $60,000 to $80,000, there's going to be an impact. And the real thing that we have to watch, especially with a pending federal lawsuit, is that this could be a catastrophic event. It could be one decision that starts a ripple effect where all these things happen at the same time. And if you saw in those green areas 25% of that housing stock go into foreclosure, up for sale at the same time, you would change the nature of this community forever. So we have to be very serious about how we look to spread these costs and how we look at funding options. In the darker areas, you know, a lot of those are seasonal homes, a lot of those are very expensive, but $60,000 on those homes, people are either going to pay it, or they're going to sell it to someone who's going to pay it. So we are looking at regional solutions and smarter ways, different ways to use technologies. These are sort of the gray infrastructure, traditional ways that we can deal with nitrogen removal right now, which are IA systems or reactive barrier systems that wrapped around traditional Title V systems, cluster systems, satellites, and centralized. We see all of these on the Cape currently in use. And then there are green infrastructure. Clearly, if 15, only 15% of the Cape is hooked up to a centralized collection system now, 85% of the households are not. So that does leave some opportunity to look at greener infrastructure, some of these more innovative approaches. But clearly, everything needs to be on the table. This is the commission's smart growth policy, which is to guide growth towards areas that are adequately supported by infrastructure, and away from those areas that need to be protected for reasons in the Act. And we come back to the Cape, because we want to look at how are we going to build a smarter Cape? What does this water quality information mean, and how are we going to collect it? This shows you a representation of wells, drinking wells, that are tested with information that's collected and sent up to Boston to DEP. This here shows you our PALS program, our Ponds and Lakes Stewardship Program that we run at the commission. All of these water bodies, these freshwater bodies and lakes are monitored by us. That information is collected and sent over to UMass Dartmouth. This shows you the MEP monitoring sites. So this is where Dr. Howes gets all of his data from, that's feeding us those and allowing us to work on those TMDLs. These are nonprofit monitoring sites, so you can see Scandon in the Bay, the Provincetown Center for Coastal Studies, you see the Pleasant Bay Alliance, and you see the Buzzage Bay Coalition, all collecting water quality information, whether it's drinking water, freshwater, or saltwater information. But none of this, this information isn't collected and centralized in one spot. And that's what we're trying to do, is to take all of this and centralizing and collecting, we're working with IBM right now, to create this strategic information office, so that we can have all of this water quality data on the same technology platform, and then be able to plug it in with a land use database. And the Senate budget right now contains some funding to put that land use database together, and not an insignificant piece, $150,000, to go forward. So if we get a water quality database, a land use database, we can start to much more efficiently and at a much lower cost to towns, move forward with comprehensive wastewater management plans. And innovation, as we are pressed by the lawsuit, as we continue discussions with the state and the feds, regulators, we have to keep in mind that regulation stifles innovation. So clearly, there's going to be a traditional approach in trying to clean up a lot of these congested, problematic watersheds and abeyments. But we want to leave some opportunity for innovation. We'd like the Cape to be a test site, to look at some of these green technology issues, look at some of the new technology that's out there, so that we don't overbuild with gray infrastructure the Cape and have that lead to unintended consequences that we've seen in other communities like Gloucester and the other Cape. So we go back to our $8 billion scenario, which we know we can't afford. And we looked at only sort of sewer-ing dense areas in coastal watersheds, we could shrink that down to about $5 billion. But, you know, with the MEP data that we have and the other data, we can get smarter now, and we can look at sewer-ing dense areas in coastal subwatersheds with specified TMDLs. And that brings us down to that $3 billion number. That's where we can get. And so you can see the dramatic decrease in the amount of infrastructure we'd need, the dramatic decrease in the cost of a project at that point. So we need to find a way to get in this range. And that's it.
Paul, does that, $150,000, does that survive house one?
It showed up first in the Senate budget.
Okay.
So it's only in the Senate, so it's going on to conference now. So it'll be submitted to a conference between the House and the Senate. And if it survives that, Andy and I have been having some discussions with the state. The Commissioner, DEP, has been very supportive of the project, so we expect that, we're hopeful that the governor would view that favorably if it survives conference. So we really need to work on the House at this point.
Is there anything you want us to do as far as advocacy for that?
Yes, I would like you to write a letter.
Okay. If you would frame the points that you want to make in the letter, I'd be happy to sign it.
Yeah, we had that discussion this morning. So we'd like, we're looking for support from the county commissioners, from Selectman, Business Roundtable, the Association of the Reserve Cape Cod, and the Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, so if you would present that, you know, the draft of that letter to us, we could put it on, we'll make sure it gets on the agenda next week to, you know, to sign.
Okay. That'd be great.
Is that okay?
Yes.
So that's the presentation. It runs a little bit more smoothly when we have a different setup, so you had a spark board.
Well, I saw this at the Smart Cape.
You did, you saw it, yeah.
And it was wonderful.
And this is on the web, this is on your website, because I saw on your website you had links to presentations that were done.
Yep, it was all available on the website. And we continue to try to improve this. One of the ways that we're going to start up, we wanted to wait until seasonal residents were back, the summer folks were here, before we started the watershed tour again. We're at the point now where we can take this presentation and encapsulate it, and so that it's narrated and becomes self-directed. And then we can disseminate it without people having to present it, and so that's what we're going to be doing over the summer.
Now, we did that with the Four Point Program.
Right.
Okay, and I think that's up now, right? If you could, we could do that with this as well. Just tell them, do you want to come over? We could run that over for, over to community TV.
Sure.
And if we can get it back, I think that was successful as far as going on the site.
Yeah.
So let me know in the next, you know, couple of weeks as to when you want to come over to do that, or who you want to do, and we'll get that done.
I also have had requests from members of the Outer Cape, and I would have to get you and Andy and, well, even if you would want to be there, just to discuss this problem. It came up in a discussion with Senator Wolf and Peak. So it would be really the four or five Outer Cape towns. But I also think you should go to the non-resident taxpayer.
Taxpayer being the...
The non-resident taxpayers, who are really not in the loop of the yearly discussions. And there's a very, very big one on the Outer Cape that you should, I mean, I could get in contact with them, and they would have...
You know, we started slow with the watershed tours last year, in part because we wanted to work on this presentation. It's still not complete, but it's getting there to tell a concise message. But we get requests a lot now, so we go wherever that's requested. I think we're presenting to a Girl Scout troop in Born next week.
Eastham Selectman?
Yeah. So we're, and Eastham Selectman have made a request. So we are on the road, having this discussion with whoever we'd like to discuss.
In addition, what, you know, archiving this kind of a presentation, that's what the, you know, if you take a look at the PEG requirements, we could get it on the government channel by, you know, if we have it in that kind of a format, narration. So as soon as we can get that, as soon as, and I think 30 minutes is about as much as you can really put into something like that.
Yeah, this, the first time we gave this presentation, in the fall, it was an hour long. So it had more slides in it, and it didn't have any of the video. The video has allowed us to cut significantly, cut huge portions off. So it's down to about 20 minutes now.
Okay, so that would be perfect, because we could have a lead-in and then, you know, and then sort of a summary and get that out. So let's do that.
That's very good.
Okay.
All right.
I guess that's all on our agenda today, right? So do you have any reports to make, Sheila, as far as...
No.
Anything on new business? Of course, on the new business, we'll add this...
Yes, we'll...
Sign off the letter.
Yes, well, we can, well, we'll have, yes, we'll have that on the agenda. And it was...
Okay, so, okay, we don't have a weekly report from the county administrator or the assistant county administrator. And is there anything, any place you've been lately you want to talk about?
No.
Any place you've been you don't want to talk about?
No. There's been plenty of places I've been I don't want to talk about. But not this week. I'll give you a comprehensive update, maybe a monthly update by next week.
Well, I think what we'd all like to talk about is the different committees that we're on, so we can all keep track of that.
Yes.
Okay, so with that, I will, and by the way, we're not going into recess, but we're forming, because I'm going.
That's right. So we are making, I am making a motion to adjourn.
Okay, it's 3 o'clock.
At 3 o'clock. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Well, thank you.